We're going to call this meeting committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:01 PM here in council chambers. Do we have any remote electronic attendance?
Nope.
Nope. All right. And on the questions on the agenda, if you'll note that we had to reconcile some information we had, and so we've taken Will Tomlee's reappointment off for this, this meeting that'll come up next year. So we have an oath of office. Chief Galt, can you please introduce our probationary police officer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, counsel. Tonight, I'm proud to introduce you to Edis Jasmine. Edis is a, was born in Off-Start Bosnia. He grew up in Moline, Illinois. He attended Moline High School. And after high school, graduated Black Hawk College where he received an associate's degree in criminal justice. He previously worked for T-Mobile as a sales associate before we hired him on March 22nd. He recently graduated the SWCC Police Academy on July 2nd. And he is now back in the city of Moline and going through the field training program. And we expect him to be on solo patrol about Halloween. So tonight, I'd ask if the mayor would swear him in for his official oath of office.
All right, so if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Edis Jasmine.
Aye, Edis Jasmine.
Having been duly appointed as a probationary police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a probationary police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations again, and you keep one. And I'll keep my pen.
Complete your appointment and I'll pin the badge on your form. Congratulations, welcome along, please. So I'd introduce you to the council and thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Congratulations, Eddie.
We did start doing it.
I think you might be preferred.
Band shape normal.
It's been awhile.
It's been awhile.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have no clue.
He had baby yesterday. Okay. Our next item, our mayor's board appointments. Are there any questions? Appointments and reappointments. Okay. We'll move to our agenda items. The first item is amendment to chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 35 dash 3103 zoning map to reclassify the property at 1613 20th Avenue from R2 to NC. Is there?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been two weeks and I need a refresher.
Usually Bob knows an explanation.
Right, there's usually an explanation, but we. Marty said eh, it's okay.
He nodded.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hello.
Wait, no, no, we have to have discussion.
That'd be great.
I know, see, I mean that it's a two week prior, I know, really. Let's do our discussion.
Sam, do you have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Meyer.
Well, I just have a few, a few questions. Were the neighbors all notified?
Yes.
The owners or, or at the door or via mail or?
I'm sorry?
For the public hearing, were they notified via mail or by the door? Did any of them respond?
No.
No responses. Does anyone know why, why the houses that are across the street and next door to the west, why are those are NC code? Have they always been that way or was that?
The whole 16th Street and across are all NC.
Do we know why that was done or was it changed?
It was part of the comprehensive plan, the zoning plan.
All right. I had one more question, but I'd forgotten it.
Well, seeing as you get two questions on every topic, you can save that. Is there another?
No.
If there's anyone else with questions or comments?
I'm sorry, did you say nobody responded?
Right.
And you said it was a, somebody said it was a lot of rental property around there that, around that area?
What about?
That it was mostly rental property or do we know?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Just a, so when we said that we notify, do we send it to the?
All the surrounding property owners.
To the property owners or to the properties themselves?
Whoever's listed as the owners, yep.
Okay, so if they're?
Landowners.
Could be somewhere.
Okay, all right. I think that's what you were trying to say.
So what's your second question?
The other question about the vacant property index, were they registered or have they been registered?
That specific piece of property?
Right.
Was it registered as a vacant property?
Right, right.
I don't know, the owner's here along with the petitioner. Is it vacant or? I know that's your child.
At the moment, yes.
At the moment, yeah.
Anything else for discussion?
Plan commission recommended approval as of staff.
There were no objectors.
Right, it was seven. Okay. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Six, ayes, one.
Thank you, and that was Alderman O'Brien?
No, that was Alderman Meyer.
Meyer, thank you.
Thank you, that motion passes. Number two, the purchase of a Niton XLP 300 lead paint analyzer from Thermoscientific Portable Analytical Instruments, Inc.
Can I read this?
Yes, please.
Sure. So the city of Moline applied for received and then we administer a $20, $2.4 million lead-based paint hazard reduction grant from 2018. And that was on behalf of the Illinois Quad Cities Healthy Homes Coalition. The Department of Housing Urban Development, better known as HUD, Office of Healthy Housing and Lead Hazard Controls requires that any x-ray fluorescence analyzers used in HUD guidelines compliant lead-based paint inspections or lead risk assessments possess an approved performance characteristic sheet. Currently, the department has two analyzers with HUD approved certifications, different specifications. A Vicon Detection, and I'm not going to go PB 200I handheld XRF lead paint analyzer, and a Niton SLP 300 lead paint analyzer. Staff previously purchased the Vicon Detection equipment in 2019. This would be the purchase for a second XRF gun. This would be the Niton XRF. Additionally, the community development division department would like to trade in its 2009, which is quite an old piece of equipment, XLP 300A lead paint analyzer for a credit off of the purchase. And the funds are all, it's all grant funded.
Love to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Went?
So with these, and I apologize, I should have sent this question earlier. I know we're in the consortium with Rock Island and East Moline. I'm assuming these things aren't used every day, all of the time. Do we coordinate with other bodies across the river and all that kind? I mean, the, the reason I ask is because, I mean, if we've got equipment that isn't being used all the time, if we can coordinate and help our neighbors, I think that would be a good.
Yeah, this is like a $20,000 piece of equipment. The credit on the equipment that we're trading in is $4,000. So I mean, the net effect is about a $6,000 purchase. Marty, do you know whether we coordinate?
KJ is here.
Because I, I really haven't been around long enough to know if we're coordinating with our neighbors.
KJ, you're here.
But that's a good question. KJ could probably best answer the question.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we do coordinate with Rock Island, Silverstone, East Moline. When we buy, when we buy the grant, I mean, when we buy the gun out of the grant, it can only be used for grant functions. So if they don't have a certified lead risk assessor, they cannot use the gun. So right now, Rock Island has one lead certified, unleaded certified, and so is Strick. So we're the only three that can use this gun that we're going to purchase.
And it has to only be on the Illinois side of the river, is that?
Yeah, whoever's using the grant who's ever in the coalition.
Okay, thank you so much. Other questions?
You got a question here?
Mr. Schmidt?
My, this is really small, but I just want to make sure. It, what, when it says here and identifies the approved certifications, it says an SLP instead of an XLP? I'm presuming that's a typo?
Possibly, yes.
The, the, I just want to make sure we're not buying the gun that's not certified. We are buying the gun that is certified.
Correct.
Great, that's.
Mayor, who's the first and second? I'm sorry, because.
Pat O'Brien was first and Alderman Schmidt was second.
Waldron, thank you.
Or Waldron, I'm sorry.
We all look alike.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number three, intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signal maintenance.
Yeah, the city, the city and the Illinois Department of Transportation have a longstanding history of working together, as do other local governments. And we have an existing agreement with IDOT that reimburses the city for traffic signal, electrical and maintenance costs at IDOT intersections throughout the city. The current agreement expired on June 30th and the stamp is seeking approval to enter into a renewal intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signal maintenance for a 10-year period starting on July 1, 2021 and through June 30th of 20.
That is.
That's 2031.
Should be 2031.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number four, amendments, chapter four alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding Class C, Double C, and Triple C. I think I will turn this to you.
Okay. So, yes, you know, we have been looking at our liquor code. And some of you have raised issues to consider as well. We've had community members who've raised concerns about certain issues. So we are looking at making changes. We decided to do it in perks. So what we have here is perk one. And this really covers two major issues, but not all of them, obviously. And the first one is one that probably you have talked about for a number of years, which is how do we limit the number of licenses? Make sure that our businesses are appropriately licensed in our retail and our downtown and our other business areas have the correct mix when we address concerns of residents. So we are proposing here that we limit the number of licenses in the C, Double C, and Triple C categories. So what is currently issued? So that obviously means that we're not trying to impair anyone's license who already has one issued. We're not looking to put anybody out of business, but we will limit going forward. Also, should we be at a limit of licenses and a business owner comes in and wants one, we can always consider a code change in the issue. So we are not hard and fast limited. This is a very common practice in other communities. So our, our second issue here is one that was brought to our attention by certain business owners. And that is the, as well as other people in the community. And that is, you know, the spacing as I call, the spacing of those types of businesses and C, Double C, and Triple C. So we also proposed today for your consideration the spacing requirement of 100 feet between each of those businesses. So again, it would be perspective only, but it would prevent a business block of looking like liquor store, convenience store, bar, et cetera. So it certainly promotes a greater mix of retail or businesses. It addresses issues brought by the community. And it's also a very common regulation among various communities. So we know that you have also raised issues about Sunday sales, hot tails to go. We thought that we would do this in two parts. So this is our first bite at revising your liquor code and also making some other just minor changes to correct problems such as your con code actually prohibits any carrying of alcohol outside of stores. So we fixed that. We also created a new definition of packaged liquor, which your con code identifies as sealed alcohol. And as you probably know, sealed alcohol is now commonly used with hot tails to go. So we wanted to avoid any future confusion. So what you saw before as sealed alcohol is now a packaged product.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and by Meyer?
Thank you.
Discussion? Question, Mr. Timian?
Just, just out of clarity, if a C, Double C, Triple C closes, the, the number of licenses doesn't shrink? It stays, so then there's a freebie that really the first person who qualifies can get, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Why 100 feet? I couldn't help but notice that on our current map, it was about 150 feet was the closest, although I think that was a Hy-Vee, to the Hy-Vee gas was that distance?
Through their parking lot.
Which seemed like a silly distinction, but I, I get it. It's, it's legally there. Especially if we're talking about this going forward, so it's not necessarily impacting that current. Couldn't we select it to 300, 500?
Absolutely. So we chose 100 as a pretty standard in, in codes, a standard distance. It's your policy decision to increase that, to increase that.
I think all 100 feet buys us is, you know, you may have liquor stores on both corners, but you're not going to have them in between. It's kind of.
Well, I could tell you on Fourth Avenue, there's a new liquor store and there's an old liquor store that amazingly doesn't have a used car lot in between the two liquor stores. 4100 Fourth Avenue, that's the new one. And 4322 Fourth Avenue, that's the other one that's there. So, but that's a little over 100 feet. But yeah, we've, we've got some pretty close liquor stores down there.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Margaret, you said that's pretty much the standard, 100 feet. Is that the stand, the standard in the Quad Cities? Are we lower than most or are we similar to Rock Island, East Moline, or do we know?
You know what, I don't know. I'd hurt finding that out.
I'd be interested that we are treating businesses the same as Rock Island, East Moline. You know, we try to be as uniform as we can, where we can, but I would be interested at least to know.
Yes, Mr. Went?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. So we talked about this a little bit. My concern with, with this, I, I don't have any problems per se, but then we've got Class B, which a Class B you can also sell packaged liquor out of. So what would prevent someone, if they wanted to put one in right next door to a liquor store and say, yeah, you can, you can drink in the corner too, but here's all the packaged liquor and, because I'm not sure if we've got any real delineation or we certainly haven't enforced any delineation between Bs and Cs in the past and the, and the costs for them are the exact same.
And what my response to that would be, let's address C first. And then because we are planning, I have it on my board, class cleanup, right? These classes, we have a lot of different things to address that, that have come to the fore. And so I think we could get to that piece of it. But this helps prevent a proliferation of, of stores that, that we've seen happen in other cases that we want to avoid.
If, if our concern is there's a couple of new ones and we're concerned about the proliferation, couldn't we say 30 is, I mean, this is, I think, what we did with.
Video gaming.
Video gaming, say 30 is the max. We have 33, so you're grandfathered in, but once one closes down, then you don't wind up with a, a freebie that everybody is, is going after. Clearly, if somebody comes in and for a particular project or development, if we decide to increase it for that particular one, we can change the ordinance. But I guess I would feel better maybe if 30 seemed like the right number and there was just another two or three that popped up, then make it 30 and then grandfather the extra ones in until they close down.
So the other thing that you can do is when somebody surrenders a license, you can change the number down.
Well, then this would prevent us then from having to come back and.
Yeah, right.
Change an ordinance. Oh, 32, 31, you know, I mean, if 30 seemed like the right number, I'd like to see something like that. And, and I'd also, this distance thing, we might as well put K license, which is the slot saloons in there. I, I kind of, I'm along the same lines of if we're saying 100 feet and none of us, none, none of the things here are 100 feet, then we're, we're just saying 100 feet to say 100 feet. There's, there's, there's no real change to any issues we're having unless we've got a, a strip mall that's opening up that is trying to do liquor store, liquor store, liquor store, which.
That, that is actually the distinction, which is it's not to change what's currently in place. It's to help prevent future proliferation.
Right, but you could have a tavern, a liquor store, tavern, all that sell package even with this change. And so.
100 feet apart?
No.
He's saying a C, B, C.
Yeah, C, B, like B, C, B.
Right.
Or if you had a really wide storefront. But, um, so yeah, I, I think we could get some cleanup, but I, I'm not sure that, I mean, 100 feet doesn't seem like a whole lot.
So regardless of what we do going forward, we cannot change what's, you know, the distance requirements of current license holders. So, you know, it will be a slow process to change. But again, we put 100 feet in as our judgment of kind of the standard distance. It's really within your discretion to make it 150 or shorter.
All right, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any idea on how frequently these liquor stores get a freebie? Like they come in and say, we're, we're done, we're not doing business in Moline, Illinois anymore because we can't sell liquor? Does that happen ever?
Well, I would defer that in a square.
And so your question is?
How often do, do these type of licenses come back where they're not using, they don't need them anymore?
Often what we see is just a change in ownership, but not a total closure of that location.
So you're not going to diminish that number probably? You're not going to get a freebie?
Over time, there will be some, just like we saw with the Class K video gaming parlors. Over time, some do go out of business. But it has taken, I think, since that was done in the Class Ks, when we first started licensing those in November of 2017, I think, it's taken till now for it to drop from eight to six. So it could take a good amount of time, you're right.
Yeah.
But if we didn't limit it at that time, it would have never reduced.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I guess my thought on reducing those numbers is if our goal is to reduce the numbers and what you're proposing makes sense, but if the goal is to remain steady and allow for growth, I mean, I hear what you're saying about, you know, now it becomes a race if one does become available. But if we, all we need is to say, okay, we want to allow one more to open, we'd be back at that place anyway.
Well, I was under the understanding that this came up because there were new ones opening up. So that was the concern from the public, from the mayor, from, and so it was that we went from 31 to 33 or, or something like that. So that, I was just trying to address what the concern was that, that brought this to the floor.
So is anyone amending the motion with the distance?
I don't think so, I didn't know another one opened up, so.
Or are we prepared to vote on it as?
There really isn't.
I, to move it to, from the cow to?
But, but what are we, I mean, this, I mean, there's not an ordinance here. Are we just saying?
This is an amendment to the ordinance.
Well, the ordinance hasn't.
Yeah, it hasn't been drafted. Unless we didn't get it.
Okay, that's right.
It's just a council action report that they have to review. And the two, the two items that Margaret has presented tonight, and that was capping the Class C, CC, and CCC, and then also adding that distance of 100 feet between them.
So you're just looking for recommendations? Are you looking for us to vote on each one of these concepts? What are you looking for?
Does he want to separate them?
Go ahead.
Do we have a draft of ordinance?
In the draft? Yeah.
But we usually approve from the car without the drafted ordinance. We don't see the drafted ordinance until we're in council.
That's not true.
I just went back and double-checked because I had the same question.
We don't attach the council until it moves on.
Well, yeah, but we know what the language change is going to be. I don't know what this language change is going to be.
The language change is limiting it to that number. Apologies, I don't have the paper in front of me.
Is it 30, is it 33, is it 34? I mean, we've got in, in the, in the memo, it says 30. On the map, it says 33. I've heard 34 from the clerk.
And that, that was changed in.
So for C it's one, for Double C it's.
34.
34, and for Triple C it's one.
So the map that has class, that's two.
The map that's attached now is correct.
It says that you have got two Cs.
That's, that is what I remember from, that was correct. One, 34, two.
I just want clarification on what we're, what we're.
Yeah, 1, 34, and two is what was.
Well, the map says 2, 33, and 1.
It only lists one.
What should not?
Mine says 1, 34, and 1.
That's what I got.
That's what I got.
Maybe you need to refresh.
That is what, that is what Margaret just said, 1, 34, 1.
That was updated and the reason for that, why it said two the first time is it was just an error that, the list that was given to Todd to create the map with. the list that was given to Todd to create the map with said that Eagles Nest was a Class C, and it was not. It's a CC. So that was updated.
Oh, okay, so they updated it.
The only liquor store is the new Riverside Liquor at forty-one hundred Fourth Avenue, which is the old Generations.
And that's how we get to thirty-four?
Yes.
Sorry?
That's the one liquor store. Then, then there are thirty-four Class CCs, which is secondary package, which is most convenience stores and grocery stores.
I, I think to, to eliminate some of this confusion in the future is to give us, and this is what we've always asked for, is a red line version of what does the code currently look like and what are you asking for it to? That way, we know what we're
You're right. I should have attached that.
That's fine. So, and we have a question from Mr. Waldron as well.
Well, that was going to be that we typically get the red line thing so we could see the language. And really, all we're doing is recommending this on to council right now. We'll get a whack at that at that time.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good.
Yeah. So that's what the vote is on. Are we clear? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you none? That motion passes. Do you believe we have an other tonight?
We have an other informational. Do you want to do the cocktails to go first?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just gonna stop.
So we have talked about this briefly before, but we want to raise as part of our second point at the code amendments, is you will allow cocktails to go, and there would be wine to go as well. So as we spoke about a few weeks ago, the current legislation revised the ability for certain retailers to sell cocktails to go through January third, I think, twenty twenty four. So those cocktails to go by state law allows to go or slow serve cocktails or wine to be delivered to individuals, buyers over the age of twenty-one, by curbside delivery or by coming in and purchasing or home delivery. The containers have to be sealed, thus they change to your other, um, part of your organs. They have to be placed in the vehicle trunk or no trunk in a compartment not accessible to the driver. And of course, deliveries through drive-throughs are prohibited. So you will have the opportunity now, as we discussed earlier, whether to limit that or prohibit that kind of sale. Generally, we have found that, uh, most communities are just adhering to state law. But there was some discussion in the past among this group about whether we wanted to, uh, limit the time that you could purchase a cocktail to go or other kinds of restrictions, or maybe prohibit it altogether. We did also consider, and you may want to think about this as well, whether you would like to make that an optional, um, license that would be available for restaurants and bars. So that would be another way to limit that. And as I said, most, uh, communities are just adhering to state law, which would allow for those sales generally. The licensed classes that currently can sell to go are those put on and off on the city's licenses. So restaurants, hairburns, hotel motel, entertainment facilities, and video gaming establishments. So we could also regulate that.
So at this point, we are following the state in, in these recommendations, and it's really up to council if they want to make anything different from that state. Yes, Mr. Williams?
Margaret, does the alcohol have to be delivered to a residence? Or can it be delivered to like a location, someone in a parking lot, at a park, at a game?
It is a good question, and I apologize. I don't know the answer.
Makes two of us.
I'll find that out for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
In general, I think that that is a, a service and an opportunity for a lot of our local restaurant-type businesses. We're going to have those craft cocktails. It is an opportunity for people to enjoy those craft cocktails safely after driving. And I think that, um, unless we've seen a, a large gathering of people buying these and driving around with them, I don't imagine it's any harder for them to do that than it is to buy a six-pack and drive around with their beer. So, um, I really don't, I don't see a reason why we would need to step up and, and restrict any further unless we encounter an issue. And I'm open to hearing that.
Mr. Went, and then Mr. Williams?
You can't use a third-party vendor, right? You can't use Grubhub or, so it's, it's the liquor licensee. Their employee would then have to come and verify that the person receiving it is of age at at the location, wherever that may be.
Well, that actually, that actually clears up some of that question because, you know, you're not gonna, unless that restaurant offers delivery plenty of other places, they're the only ones that would go to a park and deliver it. Right, not a third-party.
But, but the concern is, you know...
I agree.
Is it s- some guy setting up shop, uh, ordering drinks into the park and then
Right.
underage people coming by and grabbing.
What was your other question?
I guess it's a two-part into one, which is my second question. Is that, um, you know, if the bar closes at two or three, and I would like to see some way that we could monitor, that you have to, uh, order half hour, forty-five minutes before closing, because as they're kicking people out, you may say, "Well, just drop your credit card and order a couple cases of beer for his place," and then it just moves, moves the issue. I think it would help, uh, make it easier, I think, for everyone if you couldn't do that.
Yeah. We certainly could do that.
So that's like a last call timeframe, yeah? Got it.
Not a real last call, just a
Mr. Timmy.
Five minutes before last call.
And then we also have the opportunity, am I correct, to extend this, uh, as a whole longer than we?
I really feel like, um, it will be
Okay.
You know, it was started to support local businesses in a pandemic, you know, restaurants, other stores were suffering. So, you know, but it's worked out pretty well. So people like it.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, in chief, have we heard of any instances or issues?
I'm not aware of any.
Please.
Okay. Thank you for that informational. We will look for the next few bites on chapter four in the coming weeks, as Margaret said. Next item up is public comment. Do we have public comment this evening? Yes, Hector?
Thank you, Mayor. I rise as resident of Moline, thirty-one, twenty-eight, twelfth avenue, and as corporation counsel for your sister city, Rock Island. I was reviewing the Rock Island liquor code when you raised that question.
Hundred, hundred feet?
No, silent. The, the hundred-feet limitations in the Rock Island liquor code relates only to distance from churches and
That was weird, yeah. I'm sorry, I could get a name.
So, not something that Rock Island needs to touch on. But that's just me being friendly.
Margaret thanks you too, I'm sure.
The, uh, the reason I rise tonight to address you is, um, to talk about bicycle infrastructure. The Ride Illinois Bicycle Advocacy Group that's, uh, based in Chicago but, but deals with the entire state has assembled data indicating that sixty-five percent of adults would cycle more frequently if there were safe infrastructure available to bicycling. There isn't in Moline. You can't go north and south without taking your life there. As, as all the time in the, time, Timmy?
Timmy.
Timmy, thank you. It's, and, and I have been, uh, for years before the pandemic anyway, when I started teleworking, a daily bicycle commuter to my office in Rock Island. The part along the river is effortless and safe and at least safe. Going on Twelfth Avenue to Twenty-Fifth Street and then north to the river is perilous in the extreme. And, and my head is off to the city, to the extent that it has taken some steps. And Alderman Moore, you're my guy. We've talked about it. To add sharrows and, um, at least conceptual bike lanes. Twenty-Fifth Street going north towards the river has what appear at first glance to be large bike lanes set off to the side of the road. But when you actually ride them, what they functionally are is intermittent parking spots for scotflaws and collection areas for incredible amounts of yardage. And they're, they're unsafe to bicycle. If, if they were kept clean and free of motor vehicles, they would be entirely useful, um, for at least that little stretch. But the, the real issue that I want to bring to the, to the council is that for decades and decades, the engineering approach to designing transit in the city has been cars as the default mode of transportation. And to, to the exclusion essentially of everything. Sidewalks in the city aren't obviously quite varied. But in many sort of main corridors, they're not navigable by people in wheelchairs or people pushing strollers or, you know, walking, running, whatever. They're, they're heaved up and dangerous and narrow and really proximate to traffic. If you look at Twelfth Avenue, there's an inch, inch and a quarter of curb separating the street from the sidewalk, and all the trash and filth from the street winds up in the sidewalk, and there's no going anywhere. So I, I am here to encourage you to, to do the need for it, to address the desires of two-thirds of the adults around here who would ride their bicycles if they could do it without taking their life into their hands. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you very much for your time and attention. And of course, we're always an email away if you want to talk about liquor issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I believe we have a map here, Mr. Went. Did you want to talk about what you passed out?
And, and I couldn't agree with you more. Just to give everybody a little bit of a background, back in two thousand ten, eleven, and then adopted in two thousand twelve, Moline adopted a bike waste plan. And promptly, uh, nothing happened. You got, you got adopted and, and nothing happened, to the point where shortly after I got elected, I remember sitting down, uh, Seventh Avenue was completely torn up. They were kind of working on, on Nineteenth, and I'm sitting there in this completely torn up street, and I asked the city engineer, "So where's the bike path going to come?" Because it was on the bike waste plan. That was going to be our north-south path through Nineteenth over the hill. And the engineer goes, "So what are you talking about?" I mean, they hadn't even thought about it, hadn't talked when the state was rebuilding that road to put it in, fought with him for months, and finally got that oversized sidewalk you see where you go from one side of the street over a stardust, then you got to go up, and then you got to go back over. Well, um, we, we've moved on, uh, and if you can bring up that, uh, that map, you can see that we've got some, uh, let, let's just do, uh, just leave two thousand nineteen, uncheck the other ones. If you can do that. So prior to two thousand, uh, well, in two thousand nineteen, we added a couple of, uh, on-street bike paths and one actual off-road bike path. You can see that up in Moline on, on Tenth. That was the first time we had done anything since, click on prior real quick, which was our, the Qantas and Ben, Ben Butterworth. And so, uh, we had those, but if we, if you can kind of add two thousand, we started a, a complete streets program, been working with Dean on a, on a regular basis on, on that. And we've started to add other, um, uh, legs to this, or I call anchors. So we've got, uh, Eleventh, uh, or sorry, Twelfth Avenue and, uh, Nineteenth, where we did some road dieting, going from four lanes to three lanes, which actually reduces, uh, uh, car crashes by up to forty-seven percent because you don't have that lane switching when the guy right in front of you decides to turn left and then you try to jet around him. So we've done that here this year in two thousand twenty-one, if you click on that. We're going to be adding additional ones, uh, safe routes to school. We're, we're adding a, a lane from, uh, from, uh, Wilson to, uh, the YMCA. We're supposed to be adding some on, off-path, uh, south of the high school. And then if you go into the future, two thousand and twenty, um, we'll be building down Nineteenth. We'll be re-engineered, uh, coming through downtown, so you'll be able to, to, to come down and go downtown and connect down to the, uh, the bike path. And then we've applied for grants going over the other side of the hill, so we will be able to go north-south along that, uh, that corridor. If you hit future, uh, we've also been working with IDOT, so there's actually going to be on Sixteenth Street along John Deere Road, not on John Deere Road, but off-path that you'll be able to get from Sixteenth Street over to like Lowe's in, in that, that area over there with a cut-down to, uh, to Twenty-seventh. So there's quite a few additions we're adding in there. We're applying for one through Morgan Park. There's going to be one on Old Coal Town Road, uh, connecting with Seventh because we're going to do a even further road diet on Seventh and put on lanes there, uh, this year. So we're moving forward, um, and, and as we talked about it with Dean, by putting these anchors around town, it's not a complete grid, obviously, you can see that, but it positions us well where then we can, uh, write grants to connect those legs together. And, and I think that that's kind of our, our plan moving forward right now. It doesn't go as fast as we'd want. I wish back in two thousand twelve, when the bike waste plan was, uh, adopted, that, uh, as you said, the engineers there, uh, were of the mindset that they would, uh, include that with our infrastructure. I, I believe we've got a team in place now that, uh, they're considering that on, on every, um, build we do. And so, um, I appreciate you guys' enthusiasm and coming. I just want to make sure that everybody knew kind of where we're at, where we're going, and, and kind of the plan. And, and the hope is that we'll have, uh, more money to, uh, add into that infrastructure, both from the city and through grants.
Thank you for that update. Okay, we will now, uh, is there any other public comment?
And you can see this map, just go to moline dot IL dot US slash bike.
Other public comment?
I do have a specific question to add on about the, yeah, the bike path. Future plan, with the, yeah, my grocery question.
You can call me, Mike Went. Yeah. I'm su- I'm sure Matt will be involved. I'm sure... I'm su- I'm sure Matt will be involved, I'm sure Sam, but we've all been kind of.
Yeah, the best policy is to call and Alderman.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Dan McNeil, uh, one nine zero four four six three, Moline. I was part of the committee that worked on the bicycle plan in, I think, two thousand and eleven. Alderman Walden was with us on Demethas. And, uh, I'm glad that it's, uh, we brought it off the shelf and working on it again. Moline has a treasure when it comes to trails in Moline. If you look at the Kiwanis Trail on the Rock River, um, the Great River Trail extends to Savannah, that's the longest continuous trail on the Mississippi River. Off-road trails at Sullivan Island and Stevens Park. So a lot is in place of trails. I'm glad that Hector and Alderman Went talked about the need for the connections and the bike ways within the community. I think that's really important. I just wanted to briefly, um, talk about other elements of being a bicycle-friendly community. And, and that can be a designation that the city goes after with the American League of Bicyclists, um, or if you don't need the plaque, um, you can just decide that you want to be a bicycle-friendly community. But a couple of those elements, um, we've talked about engineering and evaluation and planning, but I think two elements that are often missed are education and encouragement. So with a lot of accidents and fatalities that we've seen, I just think that there are a lot of motorists and bicyclists that don't understand that we are sharing those, right? And so we need more education. And I think I even said bike trails, they're recreational trails, right? We share these trails too. I share these with skateboarders and walkers and so I need to be corrected there. But it's the same way with streets, we share the streets as well. And we need to educate our community, educate our cyclists, educate our motorists and kind of all be on the same page, right? And, and look together. And, uh, I also served on the park board at that time around two thousand and ten. And when I look at bicycle infrastructure, it's, it's not just, I think we, we turn to parks and trails, but it's also, it's about community and economic right. It's where people want to live in communities that aren't just car-centric, right? That are designed for humans. So, um, I applaud those that have started this work again and, um, I will also volunteer my time again. I just need a pledge from everyone that we're more committed than we were a decade ago. It was a frustrating time and I'm glad that I think we've got a progressive mayor and council who are committed, so I'm committed as well. So please reach out to me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Went. Others? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Hendricks and I live in Forest Hills in the home that my wife's great-grandmother lived in. I've commuted my bicycle for thirty years. And I think that a lot of people don't realize that this is clothing that you can commute in. You don't have to wear a special clothing to ride a bicycle.
As is this one.
That's right. A lot of times it's my bow tie. There is a large and growing segment of every community, ours included, that will never again be able to afford a safe or reliable automobile. We will see more and more cyclists. It's just a very affordable and convenient way to get around, even if all we do is ride to the bus stop, take the bus stop to where we're going and ride the last segment. And I got to tell you, I've been arguing about these things since the nineteen seventies. And it hurts, it really hurts to see so little has changed since nineteen seventy. I really hope you take this one really serious this time and really do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that all? No, we have one more.
Demethas, Moline, class of sixty-nine. Eighteen sixteen. And, uh, I was lucky enough to Jeff Anderson, former city planner, asking me to be on the Complete Streets Committee, working with Mike and David and Sam. And, uh, if you look around the neighboring cities, that there really isn't anybody else that has a Complete Streets Committee set up. What happens, what happens is that the cities have the plans like that, but there's no one to, to keep the momentum going. It gets pigeonholed and the clock is ticking. I, I think about biking, these people see grains of sand going through, I see bicycles going down. And all these people here, all these great people that got thousands of miles up on the streets, rolling and crossing. And I wanted to present this, I had, and Mike passes out, and Hector referred to Ride Illinois and Ed Varzadi. This is a compilation of the map. And I don't know if anybody else needs to do that. I should say, this is, it's, it's a map of progress and a like of progress. And it's also a future template for what we can do. And it's the charge of everybody sitting in this room and anybody listening to the video that you do something in your own neighborhood to bring us forth. This was a two thousand and nineteen edition. And when Mike did his presentation there, it's great, I wanted to complete, working on the Complete Streets Committee. This, and if anybody else needs a copy, please do that. I, I would say, I ride state streets all the way around, all season, every day of the year. And what I would say is the more paths that you have to access for everybody, underserved communities, Florentine tastes, they can get their commute, anybody should, but then in, in the plan, Moline's Bike Waste Plan, the goal is within a half mile of every household that there be access to get to the river. And you got two rivers, the Rock River Trail. If you look on the Rock River Trail Initiative, you'll see that there is a bike path that goes all the way from actually Myland to Hennepin Lot Thirty-two, all the way up to Horicon Barge. So it's Rock River Trail Initiative. And that Kiwanis Trail needs a lot of TLC. And I just want to thank you guys and y'all for listening. And anybody, no matter, we all, someday we'll be, we're ambulatory now, rideability now, but we won't always be ambulatory. And I want to be when I'm, when I'm reached my second century, I want to be able to walk down the path to the river and connect from one river to the other. And I actually put that concept forward and someday the city will lead, will lead an all-city ride to, one river to the other. Demethas, class of sixty-nine.
Thank you so much. One more.
Hi, I'm, uh, oh, I'm from the other side of the river. I'm eleven forty-eight fourteen, Hamilton Drive. My name's Steve Ring. I'm the president of the Quad City Bike Club. So that's where we're at. My wife and I moved up here two thousand and eleven when first army came to the island. And, uh, the town we lived in had a hundred and ten miles of bike paths. Kids didn't have to ride out the street, excuse me, streets. Every neighborhood was connected to the path. It was pretty amazing. And we come up here and, uh, it's okay. It's not great, it's okay. And you can do so much better, so much better. And my wife and I, lucky me and my wife who retired, so we can come from Davenport to Moline to have coffee in the morning, ride the river. What I want to tell you is Quad City Bike Club, we have about six hundred members plus of Kiwanis. And I make the same offer I made to the Davenport City Council. If you need help, let us know. We're kind of all in it together. And, uh, don't be afraid. You all know Dean, he's our point man. And we've got maybe not as many people like Dean, but we have a lot of enthusiasts that will step up to the plate and help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else with public comment tonight? Okay, thank you so much, those of you that were here. We will close out the Committee of the Home moving, movie, meeting. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you have one more informational. I'm sorry that I skipped that to public comment.
No, we did it on purpose.
Okay. We have one more, one more informational under other.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I just, there was a question about the process for setting, um, the calendar, the council meeting calendar, and I just wanted to explain what the process is. So, um, at the beginning of each calendar year or fiscal year, municipalities must prepare by statute, um, a calendar, and that is for county council meetings and all other board and commission meetings. And then that calendar is set and it's posted publicly. Throughout the year, we may call special meetings, we may cancel meetings. And so we have to do that, um, in that way. It doesn't change the calendar, the calendar doesn't become revised, it's still on the website as it was initially approved by council. But then, um, as things do occur like just did recently, I will post a cancellation, an agenda that shows a meeting that was canceled, and then I'll post a special meeting for the new one that's called. Were there any questions about that process?
Yes, Mr. Went.
Yeah, my concern, and, and maybe Margaret can, can speak to this a little bit, you know, we, we set a, a calendar, we vote on it. I oftentimes plan things in advance, vacations, different things that are coming up based on that. And I guess I was always under the impression if there was something that we voted on, that if we were going to change it, that that would be something that at least that would come to council and we'd vote or, or get our input on, on making those changes. My concern was, it, it sounded like the, the process was if a director just said, hey, we want to cancel a meeting or we want to just add a meeting so that I can do something this week, then it just happened. And so I guess in the six years I've been on council, we, we haven't had a situation where, we've had special meetings and we voted to, to, to hold those. Or we met the ordinance if it was an emergency one, that there was enough aldermen and the mayor that, that, that did it. Or if we canceled one, we got the consensus and, and we voted as a council to say, yes, we're going to cancel that and not have that meeting. And so I, I'm, I'm just looking for input because as it turns out, both of these nights that we switched to, I've got conflicts. I, I may be able to, to move them around, but, um, it was just sort of like, where did that come from?
I know, and I can't explain. So the reason for the change, it was at the request of the finance director and it's really came about because of the three-year budget that we've moved to. So that was the big reason for the push. It changed the timing of everything from the two thousand and twenty-one amended budget that's going to be presented in August, all the way up into the October presentation of the two thousand and twenty-two budget. And that will, um, those amendments need to be sound because that's the basis that we're building that three-year budget on. So she wanted, she pushed it that week or asked that that be pushed a week. And then in October, um, the directors are all working now on their three-year budgets and then that all goes to finance and it's, it's a huge task.
Oh, and, and I don't doubt that. I'm just more of the, we're, we're changing things and that we had voted on without coming to council or any input from the, the alderman that voted on the merger. I mean, how is that typically handled?
So, yes, you probably know a special meeting can be called by, yeah, the appropriate number of sitting elected officials. Similarly, you can cancel without a vote. Now, I appreciate that, you know, for convenience sake, it's, you know, notice and a consensus may seem appropriate. And I support that one hundred percent. But by law, you do not need to vote because your calendar by statute is set. You are not changing those dates, although it seems like you are.
Other than you're canceling it and moving it one week later.
Right, right. But you, you know, um, you can by law cancel meetings and you can by law.
When you say you, is it like just a director can say, I want to cancel the city council meeting?
No, no, I mean, well, I mean, cancellations can occur any number of ways. You cannot have a quaff and cancel.
But, but, but I mean, this is like, hey, in, we're, we're canceling something in August and I'm just trying to understand what are the, the guidelines for something like that to happen?
So there really aren't any, it's really informational. So when a meeting needs to be canceled, then it's really, you know, it can be done by the mayor, by, you know, a, a number of other men who say, I'm not going to be there and then the meeting is canceled.
But I, I guess my question is, it's like, we had some topic that was coming up next Tuesday that was, I guess, that was going to have a lot of input from the public or something. Could somebody just say, hey, we're just going to cancel that? Who, who, who makes that decision of just, I mean?
Yes, Mr. Went.
And I'm confused how I'm reading from our ordinances. The city council should meet as a committee of the whole through all that. If an alternate meeting date, time, or location is deemed necessary by the mayor and/or the city council, such change shall be made by special resolution of the city council and proper public notice.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
So I guess I'm reading that straight out of the ordinance here.
Now, by law though, you can also set a special meeting. So.
So the distinction is they didn't move the date, they canceled one and made a special meeting for the other. Which is, which puts us in violation of our three Tuesdays of a Committee of the Whole Meeting. If we have to have three regular meetings a month and we've canceled one and replaced with a special meeting by not voting on it as a council, that would now put us in violation of having three meetings a month.
Well, right, but you always have the ability to cancel. So, yes. You, that is a right that you possess to do.
I, I guess from my standpoint, I guess I'd like to direct staff to come back to us with a white paper or what, what is the process? Or, or maybe we adopt something or a clarification of the ordinance that says if we're going to be canceling meetings, that the council is at least involved in that in, in some way or enough of the council and the mayor is involved with it in, in, in some way?
Yeah, I agree that what I'm hearing is that you will like council info on canceling.
I think that'd be appropriate. Yeah. And have a, if a majority of us want to cancel it or a majority of us want to.
Can we, can we pull the council about who wants to move forward with that?
Well, and I guess, I, I fail to see how it's not our legal right and responsibility. That, that, that's, that's a much more blunt way. But I'm actually looking at this and saying like, that is our authority that cannot be done otherwise, is what I'm reading here. And I've not heard an argument that makes me believe otherwise.
Right, so that is one way to do it. But meetings can be canceled by law other ways. And special meetings can be called by other means as well.
So I think, well, you finish that, go ahead and finish. I was just. I was just gonna say, we kind of have two issues. One is, can we leave the suggested timeline here that with the adjusted dates, it was October and August?
October 9th, from the 12th to the 19th, and then from October 7th, or August 17th to the 24th. And I'm going to vote no because I've got conflicts on both those nights. I'm going to try to move them, but.
So, so that, that is one issue, is, do you all agree that that's okay for now? Just operationally because of the explanation of the difficulty of the task that we've asked of staff to get a lot of information. Also, I'm not sure if this was mentioned, but they, the directors have been asked for a semi-annual report?
Yes.
A semi-annual report as well. So, the way I picture it, you know, I'm very visual, they're getting crunched on this timeline at the end of October, and they're getting crunched with the summer timeline expectation. So, that's the reason for trying to find some flexibility in the dates. The other piece that we would be deciding is just to somehow put some language there that, you know, any changes to, to council meetings will be addressed by the city council as a whole. Or, we, that's probably too broad. I don't know how you want to say it, did you have any handwritings?
Yeah.
No. Or is that, am I clear on those two things that we're trying to accomplish here, the discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I guess if we call the special notices, I'll expect to receive my notice from the police department as defined by the ordinances.
What?
In the case of a special meeting, we are to be notified by the chief of the police or a designated officer.
I'm not understanding that. Sweet, another code update.
Yeah, there's some weird stuff, isn't there? There's some weird use to deliberate and deliver.
Well, I mean.
The mayor can get people out of jail, too.
Yeah, that's true.
That is in the ordinance.
So, I, I mean, I can entertain a motion during this informational, correct? If you're wanting something else to happen.
Well, I'll move that, and, and an explanation or a recommendations on how we do this moving forward, that we get the council input.
Do we have a motion on the floor to get an explanation of how to schedule?
Well, I mean, an explanation about what, what the ordinance is, what, and, and a way to ensure that the council has input on these.
Is there a second? Mr. Moyer? Seconded. All in favor, or sorry, any more discussion?
That was Alderman Moyer.
Yes. Yeah, that was.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Are you by saying that or by moving that asking for the calendar is originally voted and to remain?
I think that's a different issue.
No, that's a different issue.
I think the mayor, one of those is two different issues.
He's asking staff to provide a.
Explanation.
An explanation of the current ordinance.
And guidelines on, on how meeting rescheduling will take place with input from the council.
There you go.
So, that's been motioned and seconded, and we had some discussion. Anything further? All in favor? Oh, no, sorry.
Are you looking for what is allowed by law and ordinance? When you ask for that explanation?
Yeah, I, I think we, I mean, from what Alderman Schmidt had said and.
We have ordinance, we have.
And if, and if we need to add to that ordinance to make it more clear that, that the aldermen should be involved with this, yeah.
I, I do have, and I did not have, but as I look closer, I have a real concern that this is in violation of our ordinance. It is taking responsibility from the council.
Well, that's what I think our next vote is going to be.
I mean, now, it can be gotten around easily by canceling a meeting and calling a special meeting, but I think that has to be called out in that way. So, I guess that is, that's my concern of, of how we address that. And I think we can address the issue before it becomes a problem.
So, do you want a more official legal opinion?
The melding of the ordinance we currently have and law that you've stated. That's how I understand it.
I think the ordinance is clear, I don't need any further opinion.
Right.
I am staking out to my, I'm staking out to the authority of the council. So, actually, I intend to vote no, because I don't think we need any more information. I don't think that those meetings can be moved in the way they've done without calling special meetings.
The reason I, I want the opinion, because my hope is that it'll come down the way that you said, and then it'll be on record, so there won't be any questions in the future. Be like, not only is there our interpretation, but that's what our council said. If she comes up with something other than that, then we will amend the ordinance to meet whatever the interpretation is to ensure that it does what we want it to say.
Is that clear, Ms. Gustavos? Okay, thank you, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, do you mind if we do roll call? Couldn't tell. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Let's see, I'm sorry. So, we've got five ayes and two nays.
Okay. So, legal counsel will bring back an, an explanation. So, the other item I can entertain a motion on is whether you want to accept the dates that were shared or go back to what was originally passed, correct? Yes, Mr. Timian?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the amended city council meeting dates as proposed.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Waldron. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Went?
I'm just here about no, because I have conflicts, so.
So, I have concerns about the way that motion is raised. We're not changing your calendar for the year. Or maybe the motion is better to accept the cancellation of previous scheduled meetings. And the scheduling of special meetings is previous.
I'd like to strike my motion and make a new motion to.
Just amending your motion.
Yeah.
Amending my own amended, okay. Just saying, we are accepting the cancellations of the city council meetings and also accepting the proposed special meetings. And I only say that because I don't have the dates in front of me. So, as.
October 19th and August 24th.
Got it, so do we still have a second? We have a second to the amended motion. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, that would be five ayes, two nays. That motion passes.
And the nays were Went and.
Went and Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, correct, I am closing out this com, Committee of the Whole meeting and moving to the regular council meeting. All right, let's go.
Sorry, Your Honor.
It's fine. Called order, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an invocation? No, okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Let's see, Snutt, Alderman Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of June 22nd, 2021, and appointment made during Committee of the Whole, July 13th, 2021. Council Bill 1151-2021, a resolution rescinding the declaration of local state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which was Resolution 1066-2020. Council Bill 1152-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation three surrounding property owners' consent forms, granting the city's consent for a Class B liquor license to be issued for 1209 Fourth Avenue, Suite 2, Moline, Illinois.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1153-2021, a resolution authorizing the community and economic development department to purchase a NITEON XLP 300 lead paint analyzer from Thermo Scientific Portable Analytical Instruments Incorporated in the amount of $15,975.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill 1154-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signal maintenance.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes, and that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, we move to miscellaneous business. We usually start here, on this side of the room, correct? Might we, might we after our two-week break start on this side?
If we change the code, we can.
Oh, shoot, I didn't, don't change. I already started. No, have mercy, okay. Mr. Williams?
Uh, nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Went?
Uh, I've got a couple of things. One, I was just looking up there, the appointment to boards, isn't that, do we have to give consent? Did we always vote to? It's advice of consent, are we doing that next week?
On the council agenda, it is approval of the minutes and appointments made.
Oh, okay, so that's.
So, it's part of the consent.
Okay, okay. And then, the other, I guess the other thing on, on the agenda, are we now going towards stuff that's on the cow is always going to be? Or it's just these two just happen to?
This, this, the transportation one, there, I got a call from iDOT. They were expecting that signed in April. And I looked at the date, it was April 16th, and there were no files left in the office. So, we didn't know that we needed to redo that until now. So, they wanted it by July.
Okay.
Again, I, this is like the third time, I'm reassuring you. I'm trying not to do that, but it keeps coming up.
Well, thank you. And then the last thing is, and I had a chance to talk with, with Bob about this earlier today, is that as it comes, as we're just, or the ARP question is coming down the pipe, it's, it's kind of gotten to the point where I think we're the only city that hasn't had a public discussion about it, to, to talk about what our thoughts are, brainstorm some ideas. I know that they're working behind the scenes to, to get our budget stuff in order to have a better understanding, but it's now also getting to the point where there's starting to be some things in the press of, Moline's considering this, and Moline's considering that, and we haven't had a discussion about it. And so, talking with, with Bob, it sounded like he would be open to putting it on as a discussion topic on the 27th. Gives him a couple of weeks to have some materials. I know the mayor's got some materials that she wants us to, to have in advance of that, that conversation. But I think the original plan was we were going to wait till September to start having the conversation. I think we need to at least have preliminary discussions. This is a really big topic, and I think that our residents deserve us to, to actually have some conversations about it in public. So, I'd like to move that we direct Bob to put that on to the agenda on the 27th to at least have preliminary discussions about the ARP and our ideas.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second discussion. I can weigh in on that, I don't think we need a motion to do that. We just have to have the overall plan shared with the council for discussion. For one thing, we, we aren't the only group that hasn't had a discussion in a council meeting. There have been public discussions out in listing posts, et cetera, but that people are invited to, you know, broadly. Other cities have not. I don't believe East Moline has had a full-on discussion like that. I could be wrong, but the point is, I, I heard our director say that putting that three-year budget together is part of the reason that our process looks a little different. She's said that to other finance directors. So, I agree, we should have discussion, but we should figure out to what end on January, or sorry, July 27th, because that's also when we should be receiving a draft strategic plan. And to have discussion without a, a sort of the plan we will have passed and hopefully adopted, right? We need to make sure we're not missing a portion of that discussion by not having that with us. So, that's all I would just caution us is, as we move to more clarity on the process, I mean, how are we going to make a decision? How, you know, is it only the recommendations from directors, from all the information we've gleaned that those dollars will come in front of us? And how, you know, how are we going to actually vote on how the dollars get spent? I think all of that needs clarity, but I want to make sure we have enough of the information we need to have a valuable discussion.
All right, a, a couple of things along the, one, I'd like us to vote because then it actually puts it that it's going to happen. Because we've had some other things that are like, well, we're going to get it next, like the ARP plan. We'll get it next week, and it, we still haven't seen it. And so, I, I want to have a date specific that we've given direction that we want it to happen. Two, maybe East Moline hasn't, but they're getting like 2 million bucks. I mean, Rock Island has, Davenport has, Bettendorf has, and they're only getting 5 million. I mean, I, I think that it's important for us to have the conversation. I, I understand the listing posts, but because of Open Meetings Act, we couldn't, as a, as a public body, actually participate in more than you and whoever you were doing that with. So, I, I think it's really important that we, as a council, have this discussion. And, and I'm not saying that on the 27th, we're going to button it up and say what, what we're all going to spend the money on. But I would love to have an open discussion with all of you guys and hear your thoughts, and I've seen the stuff that Marty had cut and pasted into that strategic plan. But I think having a discussion so that we kind of get a feel for, for where we're at and what our priorities are is really important as a public body itself.
Sure, and actually with the draft coming to us on the 27th of the strategic plan, we will have something with us, you know? Even if it's not adopted, we'll have something to have the discussion centered around, if that makes sense.
Sounds like a special meeting to me.
Sounds like a workshop.
Well, that's, yeah, it sounds like something that we couldn't do, that we'd have to do in its own.
Workshop.
I think a workshop is the greatest.
Yes, Mr. Timian?
I will be absent on the 27th, be riding my bike across Iowa, so.
Okay.
Just, just, just as a point of, of the information.
That's good.
No, Mr. Waldron. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Ride defensive water was the second.
I seconded his motion.
Is there another question? Comment, discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I, well, I, we have had some discussions in our, in our brainstorming original session. We talked about that, but I do think that it is, the information is out in the community, and I do think that with other communities making strides toward it, right? I agree, we should not be buttoning that up, we should not be making decisions that night, per se. But I think it's, it's a long conversation, is, is well-suited to what we're going to need to work on.
Anything else? Well, one of the things that I think in preparation for that, if, well, there is a motion on the table, so let's deal with that, and then I'll get to it. So, hearing no more discussion, all in favor? So, hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Timmy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer?
I was just thinking about the, the wonderful support we have from the biking community today, and, and I was just thinking about our Complete Streets Committee and the wonderful work that we do, and I just wanted to just real quickly mention, because we had a meeting this week, Joe Kuhl and Beck, Laura Clower from Engineering, Sergeant Russell is, is there, as well as Josh Whiting. Yeah, and Darrell, and Darrell were there. And it's just, it's a really valuable committee to have. We're, we're doing more signaling to pick up bikers, adjusting timing to ensure safety. The process of, of choosing roads now, um, a season ahead is gonna allow this committee to actually intervene and provide more design ideas and, and to, and to work more closely with, um, our engineering and our design people. I think it's a really great process, and it's something that's not actually in our code. And I, I think that's something that, um, I, I don't, I don't want to make a motion tonight, but I think we need to think about what that motion should look like and how we should do that. I mean, I think we, we need to get that in the code, and then we probably need to also add, when they're ready, in engineering, we need to, to kind of refine our CIP process and, and how we, how we, you know, make those decisions. And I know that's coming, so I, I'm not gonna make a motion for that tonight, but I, I just really wanted to just say thanks to the staff and everybody that's involved in that committee, because it's, I think it is valuable, and I think it's, it puts the bikers, the biking communities to, and it ought to.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, present to everybody, there was, that there's some language in the responsible bidder ordinance that needs to be, I guess, buttoned up to kind of complete the ordinance. I think the ordinance is okay where it's, but it needs a, like, an ending because of the apprenticeships. The apprenticeships that are not being adhered to. And I've got, uh, some language that we can put in for, I don't know how soon we can get into the next meeting, but, uh, I'll just read the first paragraph. Evidence of participation in apprenticeship training programs applicable to the work to be performed on the project, which are approved by and registered by the United States Department of Labor's Office of Apprenticeships. Or its successor organization, and evidence that any applicable apprenticeship program has graduated at least five apprentices in each of the past five years. I think we've had some, some bidders that haven't done that. And I think we know who those people are. Five years for each of the construction crafts the bidder will perform on the project. Evidence of graduated, graduation of rates are not required for apprenticeship crafts dedicated exclusively to the transportation of material and equipment to and from the public works project. The required evidence includes, but is not limited to, a copy of all applicable apprenticeship standards and apprenticeship agreements for any apprentices who perform work on the public works project, and documentation from each applicable apprenticeships program certified that it has graduated at least five apprentices in each of the past five years for each construction craft that the bidder will perform on the project. Additional evidence of participation and graduation requirements may be required by the city at its discretion.
Is there a question? Comment, Mr. Williams?
In essence, will this eliminate all non-union shops from bidding then?
If they're part of this apprenticeship program, it's a responsible bidder.
Well, the, the problem, the problem with it, because effectively it will, because I had asked the question of.
Is that why it was left out before?
What?
Is that why it was left out before?
Yeah, well, because, because if, if the, the problem would be, if, if we have, and, and I don't think that that's a, a bad thing to, uh, to get to, but the, the question I posed was, if we've got a non-union bidder right now, and they decide, they've seen the light, we pass this, and they, they're going to send all their people, they're gonna participate in, in this program. It takes four years for somebody to graduate from an apprentice program on average. And so, effectively, then they would have to have four people, or the, it'd take four years for the first five to, to graduate, and then it'd be another five years in a row, so it'd be nine years before that non-union shop could actually bid on something in Moline.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Schmidt?
And having looked at the same, the language is that the apprenticeship program to which the company belongs must have that criteria. So they could belong, the, the issue that we're trying to get at is there are paper-only apprenticeship programs, offered specifically, the ABC of Iowa is one, that does not graduate people in most of trades. So they can sign up for this program, meet the requirement. It's not that the shop has to graduate those people, it's that they have to belong to a program that actually has graduated people.
Right, but, but when I asked for, give me any shops that have met this, I mean, non-union, like ABC of Iowa or, or anything, they couldn't give me any. So effectively.
Who couldn't? A, a union organization couldn't give you any?
No, but I asked, I said, "I can't support this unless you can tell me that there are any non-union apprenticeship programs that would meet this criteria, that they could join."
The ABC of Iowa does meet it in several of its entities, actually, but it doesn't across all of them.
That was the only one.
And there are other organizations, every ABC chapter in the country probably has an apprenticeship program.
Well, I asked that, and I said, "Would it qualify if they joined the New Jersey one?" And they said, "No, because they wouldn't be realistically involved with sending their people to New Jersey to, to meet one." I said, "You just, just give me one that they could join, that they wouldn't be excluded for nine years." And they, they couldn't provide me any.
So, I, I'd like to look at it from a different angle. You've mentioned businesses, I'm gonna mention education. Y'all know now from at least one email from me, and perhaps you saw my official mayor page where I promoted the program at Blackhawk College for Highway Transportation Careers. Increasing our workforce is really, really important. And I could support things that help us expand those educational opportunities, help sort of, in, in its own way, help us get more people into programs that can get them into the workforce quickly and in good jobs. So, I just offer that as another perspective on the benefits of tidying up the apprenticeship piece of the RBO. What, yes, is there someone else with a comment? Yes, Mr. Timmyan?
I would just like to, um, maybe, the, the purpose of the apprenticeship program is to give back to the community, which we've decided as a council was important enough to put into ordinance, but we've effectively done so without teeth. And, and I think that this proposal is just saying, "We meant it, so this is how you prove it." And, uh, so if, if, if this is a, a part of the RBO that incorrectly excludes people, we should remove it instead of cleaning it up. Which I, I strongly believe in apprenticeship programs, so I'm, I'm agreeing with Alderman O'Brien and, and, and changing these requirements.
I, I agree with having that. I, I just, I have a hard problem with, if we've got a, a business that if we pass this, if they do everything in their power, it's gonna be nine years unless they join the union. Because I asked, does, like, the community colleges count? Or, or they're like, "No, those, those are degrees, those aren't apprenticeship programs." And so, I'm all for cleaning it up in such a way that there is, because I, I firmly believe in that. We just can't do something that effectively, uh, blackballs companies that, you know, if we say, "Hey, this is going to go into effect nine years from now, and you've got your time to, to start doing it," I, I got no problem with that, but otherwise, the next day, they either have to join the union or they can't do work in Moline, and, and I don't think that's a switch to her.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Do you have another way of an apprenticeship program to go through? I mean, do you have any other ideas to get an apprenticeship? You say you're for apprenticeships, what other, what other means would you do other than to have a responsible bidder to ordinance to have apprenticeships?
But sometimes, if, if, the, the idea that it has to have five years of, in the past, of five people graduating, effectively, then if you, if you pass this today, they're responsible for things for the last five years that they weren't required to do. Does that make sense? Because what you're saying is, like, "Hey, back in 2018, why didn't you graduate five people back then?" Well, at that time, there wasn't a requirement for them to do that, or they were a member of.
If you don't require them to do it, they're never gonna do it.
No, but, but that's what I'm saying, if you do it progressively into the future, I've got no problem with that at all. But what you're saying is, they're responsible for the last five years. We're gonna pass something today that says, "You should have been proactive five years ago." And, and graduated people from an apprenticeship program.
I, I don't read it that way, I mean.
But, but, but effectively, that's what happens. I, I know you don't agree with it, but unless you can find another program out there that meets the criteria, and they then can join that one, then, then I'm all for it.
Point taken. We've got a hand up over here, Mr. Waldron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just interested, and I don't know if anybody's staff is, is, our neighbors on either side of us have an RBO that has that provision in it? Does anybody know?
No, when, when we met with them.
No, no. So we're, our RBO is similar to our neighbors at this point.
Now, you did pass an RBO last October.
Yeah, but they don't have this provision in our neighboring.
Well, this gives some actual teeth to get the job done, as Alderman Timmyan said. So.
I'm just curious, wouldn't Alderman Went's way make it more apt for a non-union shop to then say, "You know what, we can do this and go that direction and still win bids as we get there"? Would that be more of a carrot than a stick than just eliminating them? I understand what, you know, supporting the unions and to pass this through put teeth in it, but maybe we shouldn't bite them, maybe we should encourage them to go the route. We want them to go lead to more training and bring them around.
Again, how do we do that? I mean, we have to, to put teeth into this ordinance to, to.
Maybe you're saying you have to be engaged in heading that way, have people enrolled in a proper apprenticeship program.
I'm willing to engage, and I'm willing to put this on the agenda, vote it up or down.
I, I think that the, the proposition would be, that we put the same language in that says, "With an effective date," and then also, or, or showing evidence of compliance, uh, starting at, so, at the very minimum, "Hey, we don't have it, but we just enrolled our people in probationary, period," right? Something to that effect. I, I don't really know what it looks like. But it shows that if, if you're serious about it, they're, they're getting it, they don't have to join a union, but they've created an apprenticeship program and they're heavily enrolled.
And they're participating in some way, or?
So this is, this is a discussion item at the moment, correct?
Discussion item, but I would like to see it put on the agenda for an up or down vote.
Okay. This is chapter 27, amendment?
Yes, sure.
Okay. So we don't need any sort of votes here, we've had the discussion. Thank you.
Had the discussion.
Thank you. Did you wanna share that language with everyone?
Yeah, we have it right here.
He's got it.
Got it, thank you. Uh, Mr. Waldron?
Thank you, Your Honor. My current burden out there in this world is recycling.
I'm gonna tell them I'll call you up.
As our representative to the Rock Island County Waste Management Agency for the last six years, and nobody cared, until the time we were gonna stop drop-off recycling, and then things got humming. But I recently, in fact, the night after the vote, was contacted by Republic Services who are providing the service down there now, and they noted that Rock Island County and Moline voted to keep that service. Rock Island County doesn't have a site, so why call them? So they called us and wanted to know if we were interested in going it alone. And I told the gentleman on the phone, I would certainly pull the group to see if there's any interest in going alone. I personally told him I was not interested in going alone, because, because you become the county dump site, and if you think things look tense down there now, if the entire county is dropping there, it'll be even worse. But I said I would at least bring it up and see if there's any interest. I would think if we're, there is some interest, we would direct staff to contact Republic Services, negotiate something, bring it back for an up or down vote. But I just wanted to get your thoughts so I could call that gentleman back. The mayor, Bob, has any information they want to share?
We've been talking about this, uh, as well, simply because I, there was a resident that mentioned that their condo association does not require recycling, and they wanted to have it, and would the city pick up the slack, you know, for, for finding it? So there's a couple of questions out there on what can we do for recycling now that Rickma is not an option, so.
Stepping away.
Yeah.
Sure. So anyhow, if I can, I mean, we had an opportunity already this week to talk about this, and, um, I asked Rod to provide me with, after the meeting, provide me with an idea as to the cost breakdown for the prior 12 months, get an idea of what it might cost, and it's significant money. I mean, uh, we're, we're looking at four bins rental of $35 each for 12 months, 109 cardboard pulls at 125 each, 194 commingled pulls at 125 each. Total cost was $39,555, so let's just say $40,000. And that's just Moline, that's not Mylan or Rock Island or East Moline. So if, uh, if it's just us in the county providing drop-off sites, you could expect that to double based on the numbers from Rickma. And if it was just us, you know, it will triple, go up even more. So, I mean, there's, there's a financial ramification to the decision that was made to shut down these operations, these recycling centers that have been around since the beginning of time, basically, before any residential recycling or anything happened. I mean, for those of you who don't know, that's how we started recycling in government, we had drop-off sites, you know? And that's been around longer than any of the programs that, that you see going on anywhere. So, you know, are they a dinosaur, are they a thing of the past? Yes and no, they do serve a purpose, but if you're going to remove them, then you have to put teeth into an ordinance so that people continue to recycle and not put all of their recyclables into the waste stream, which is really what you don't want them to do, and then fill our landfills with things that don't belong there. So you might have to have ordinance, like other cities I've worked in that, you know, mandate that people over six units or businesses, they must recycle, and that they must contract privately for that recycling with a local provider. You're gonna have to really think this through. Otherwise, you're gonna see recycling ending up in ravines, you're gonna see stuff ending up on the side of roads. These programs are big. I mean, and there's a lot of volume out here when I take a look at what was going on at Rickma.
Yes, Mr. Walton?
Just to expand on Bob's point, we have visited this issue many times over the years, and what's come up is, uh, units, six or more, the, the condo association that has seven units doesn't qualify. They certainly, as an association, could get from Midland Davis, like the school district does. I think they contract for recycling service through Midland Davis directly. You can get that service, but there's a cost. Going down to our drop-off recycling is free. And so that's why you would get a phone call saying, "Hey, can you guys pick up the slack?" Well, of course they want us to pick up the slack, and you, as residents, will be picking up the slack too. As, as Bob pointed out, you'll be paying for it. So this discussion has happened many times before, and the feeling was that anything above six is really a business operation, landlords or homeowners association, and if they wanted to recycle or get solid waste, they could contract themselves. And they do for solid waste, obviously, they just don't do it for recycling because they don't want to pass on that cost. So we have visited it before and left it where it was at, at six and above, we don't service. That's some of the history.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
With Midland Davis, I mean, would it be worthwhile to maybe open up that conversation with them that says, "Hey, Midland Davis, if we work with you on some of these larger things, what kind of price points can you give to the residents of Moline? We're already, obviously, a big user of you, we've got the contract with you, and see if maybe we could negotiate a, you know, rather than, you know, this person who owns a sixplex is trying to negotiate with them, and then this business owner trying to negotiate, and then this business, like, get some kind of, you know, rate, assuming that, you know, 20% of, or 50% of people sign up for it."
assuming that, you know, 20% of or 50% of people sign up for it, you know, contract with them.
It's probably a good approach, but who does the negotiating? Is the city going to do it for all these folks or whoever?
Well, I think, yeah.
The market's are, markets are touchy for recycling. They're on and off. China went away, things crashed. But cardboard is up again. They're getting about a $90 rebate per pole on our stuff on cardboard. Because cardboard is hot again right now. But markets are, markets are. Like the school district, the school district got with Midland themselves and made a deal. I agree with you, it might be better to do it as a group, but I don't know how you would do it for everybody.
I mean, we could start with residential, like, six, 12, you know, and get some kind of price point per unit over six.
I think since Mr. Vitas has already gotten some numbers for, like, in the day.
Like instantly.
Right? It's like instantly.
They can get numbers for five years, but they need time to pull that data together.
I think he could work with staff to see if there are any other options.
I mean, it's done differently. I mean, in other places that I've worked, I mean, we've had contracts with waste haulers and not necessarily just waste management, but contracts with waste haulers based on RFPs that we've done where, you know, we're looking for residential rates, you know? What are those going to be? And then what are the container rates for businesses? And so as the local government, we were regulating what those costs would be so that when they did approach our local businesses, the local businesses were somewhat protected. You know, there wasn't just one guy's paying $500, and the next guy, two doors down, is paying $1,000 because he doesn't know better. So we put some regulations in place through the bidding process. But of course, we bid out everything we did in terms of garbage, solid waste, yard waste, bulk goods, the whole nine yards. And I'm not recommending that here, I'm just saying as a recycling issue.
I'm just gonna assume that we are not interested in being the county's only drop-off site.
Well, if Rock Island and East Moline and everybody else wants to subsidize it.
Yeah, I, based on how they vote, I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't think there's a chance of that.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I don't know if this is a good idea or not. It's an idea that popped into my head. I just wanna float this out there, and by all means, if it's a bad one, we'll shoot it down quick. But as we look at those alternatives and options, I didn't know if there's something like, like a once-a-day monthly drop-off on like one Saturday, like we do. Mike thinks it's a bad idea.
I'm gonna say that's a bad idea. Just by-
Yeah, it seems to be suggesting that. I just wanted to put that out there.
We could, we could do like a one, like just cardboard.
Yeah, and Mike, don't we have MCDC issue, like, interest in? No, those are cleanup days, not-
If you could trust people just to bring the cardboard, I'm with you. But they'll bring 55-gallon drums of whatever it's in there. And they'll just bring it at the day before, the night before, because they know you're gonna have it at such and such date. It's risky. We used to do special pickups in this town, one day a year. We'd pick up anything you put out. People put out a garage, and then they tore down a garage and put the garage out.
All right, Mr. Wentz, I think, in the interest of time, we probably-
Does anybody across the nation do this and make money? Like, do they charge to have the drop-off? Are they creative in some way to make-
Unless you're gonna moderate, look at licenses and say you're from Moline, you're gonna put somebody out there, and you can't come into this site unless you have a Moline license.
Correct.
No.
It's just gonna pull up in a truck and-
It sounds to me like it's a to-be-continued topic to go on the-
It really, it really is. I mean, I'm not getting inundated with phone calls. I don't know.
I'm not either yet, but it's not September 30th.
Right, when it's actually stopped, yeah.
I already got it from my mother-in-law, so it's coming.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be the business, businesses as a community that are gonna raise the issue as opposed to residents. Residents are already getting recycling at-
And I wanna thank staff for putting those press releases out and continue.
Just keep doing it.
Keep notifying the public that September 30th is coming.
Yeah, good idea.
On our webpage and on our Facebook page.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt. Are you gonna make it? Because you have a newborn, and I'm not sure you're gonna make it.
I had something, I'm trying to get myself re-centered to where I need to be. I just think, there's a couple of things that are coming onto my radar, things thinking about as we're looking forward. And I've discussed some of them a little bit with Bob and with others. I am, I'm keeping a very close eye, looking forward to snow removal. I know that's something that we have had, you know, staff issues as we look to that and needing to make sure we're up to staff, that we're gonna be ready to go. And that's definitely something we need to start looking to and watching for. I don't wanna get caught off guard by that. Leaf collection is gonna be another big piece that's gonna fall along with that. I know that's something, I've heard a lot of concerns about that coming up and spent a little time this year talking about that. And so it's something I just very much want to make sure we're keeping an eye on. And, you know, as we are with so many things, but that's one was, as we rebuild our staff, to make sure we're heading in that right direction.
Can I comment on that? I'm gonna comment on that.
Well, I was gonna say, that's all, Your Honor.
Oh, thank you. I think Bob saw that on my bullet, my board in there, my board of big, you know, main ideas. And it's like ingrained in your mind. I think every week I hear something about September 1st, which was the date that I wanted to see something in front of us. So Mr. Vitas is on it.
So, if I might-
Yes, can I turn it over to you?
We had a wonderful meeting today over at Public Works. Both management as well as labor at the table discussing this very issue. And it was a very, you know, enlightening discussion. It was a very positive discussion. There was a lot of teamwork, I think is a good way to put it. There's a clear understanding of what we're up against and what we need to do. There's a manpower issue. We're certainly dealing with that, as Leah will tell you. I mean, we are really behind the eight ball because of the free hiring freezes and retirements and, you know, terminations or whatever else took place. So we know we have a shortage. So we're also talking about how to control costs if we had to go out, in a higher contractor, back in. We still don't wanna spend $300,000 plus like we did last year. I mean, literally, last year, I will tell you upfront, your costs doubled. We went from $600,000 to $1.2 million almost in operating costs for removal, snow removal. So we can't repeat that. We really can't. That's just bad, bad management, bad practices. So we are working with labor. We are working amongst ourselves. We had our initial meeting today, and we've got another one already scheduled. So we plan on coming back in here with a snow removal plan. And if it requires blessing, it will have blessing from this group. And then with clear understandings on how we will attack everything from the major arterials to the cul-de-sacs, to the parking lots, to the river trail. You know, there will be no private driveway snow removal. That's not what local government does. I mean, I'm just telling you upfront, I've heard all kinds of stories that I've never heard in a long time. So, you know, the alleys, we're gonna deal with those alleys, you know? And if there's emergency situations, we'll deal with emergencies too. I mean, because remember, we're trying to get people to and from work safely. That's what we do. We're trying to get public safety to and from responses safely, you know? And then lastly, people walking about. I mean, they fall in that order. Public safety is really up there so that they don't have to fight the snow to get where they're going. If there's a fire or if there's a crime that's taking place. So we'll have a great plan. We'll bring it to you. We'll get your blessing on it, and hopefully, we don't have any snow this winter. I mean, we did it all for nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, we've had snow this winter. Chicago didn't snow until February, to be honest with you. I was living there. We didn't get any snow until February, and only twice. So I don't know what happened down here, but-
We got ice once.
It just ruined everything.
Ice, baby.
All right, so I just have a few things, and then I'll turn things back to Bob. I have an updated graphic for you. Again, you know, I think in visuals, think ways to explain things to folks. This is just, you know, that chart that explained core functions, core values. We switched some things around and then just highlighted what we were doing at the listing posts and with some of these graphics. And again, it's just a reminder of how we can organize parts of the strategic plan that are coming our way, the things we've already seen in front of us. So these five pillars are part of our core functions. And then, you know, the goal is that everything we do for our community fills up all that space, and the whole page is blue. Does that make sense? So our decision-making should help that, and hopefully, we won't have to shrink it down too far. This is an updated, this is an updated little decision tree that I shared a few weeks ago. I just changed the center from citizen feedback to stakeholder feedback because actually, it is more broad. We've heard from the Tax Layer Center, right? People are having conversations with me. That's why you see a letter that was given to me after my visit to the Rickma, not Rickma.
Rickma, don't say the word up.
Right, there's so many, so many acronyms. So in any case, I just want you to have this in front of you so that you know the kinds of things that people are asking of us. And certainly, again, weighing things together is what we'll be doing in the coming months. So that's for your records, so you know what they're asking about. I do think, a credit to our Moline Police Department for knowing this resource is there and making good use of it. I think we're one of the top users of this. So thank you for using what's in the community to help children. Last, and I think that is, that is all from me. I'll be bringing my own thing for your file to accompany this, I think in the next week, maybe two. But we have a lot coming our way that Margaret's team has been working on all summer long. So we got out of here around 8:00 for many weeks. I'm not sure that's gonna happen in July.
It's not happening tonight.
Yeah. All right, Bob, do you have anything else?
And now for something completely different.
Yeah.
Great news.
A little muddy pipe on the other end.
Yeah, it is muddy pipe. I like that. Doesn't have to be, though. Anyhow, really great news. I put out in front for each of you a copy of a document that was released at 12:01 a.m. today. And what a great piece of news from U.S. News and World Report, who annually goes out and studies 150 metropolitan areas around the United States. So this is not a small exercise. It has been going on for as long as I can remember. And to make the list in a positive way is fantastic news for us as a city in Moline. It's great news for the Quad Cities. And they have identified the Quad Cities this year as the number three most affordable place to live. Affordable. As a part of the best places to live, we are in the top, we are the top three. We are number three out of the 150. It's phenomenal news. It's fantastic for, you know, marketing. It's great for economic development. It's great for attracting people here, obviously, as a, as a set of communities. I mean, we're trying to attract young, educated professionals to the area. I know Deere is probably struggling with that all the time because it's a competitive marketplace for young professionals. You know, they want the amenities, including bike trails. We don't score well there, guys. I want you to all go on to the, you know, on to the bottom of this page and where it says the address there for more information. Go ahead and click on that, pull it up, and you'll get even more details about this report and exactly what they identified as all the different features they evaluated, you know? And guess what? We don't score any differently bike-wise than other cities. We're all there. Everybody is not doing a great job for the most part. There are those who do better, but it is a problem. But aside from being, you know, one of the top places or most affordable, they also gave us the other data. We came out number 86 in best places to live overall. So we're in the middle, kind of, right at that center. But not a great place to retire. Number 129 on the list. So that was, that was a little disappointing. But I think overall, to be number three in terms of most affordable, that's a great marketing tool for us to use when we work with developers. We wanna talk about housing, you know, making it affordable for young professional people. You know, not with rents at $2,000 or $1,800 a month. No, because that's mortgage quality. I mean, you're at mortgage levels, you know? At $1,000, $1,100, brand-new, you know, housing that caters to the, those people between 30 and 50 would be good. So there's a lot going on here. This report really puts us in a real super-positive light, and I just wanted to share that with you. And if you've got any questions about it or U.S. News and World Report, feel free to ask anytime. So great, great way to end the meeting. Good news.
So close. I forgot one thing. That was the poll that went out for participation, professional development, if you will, for us as council members. I hope everybody has participated in the poll. We haven't gotten to touch base on that. But once we have that information, then we can come back and talk together, you know, about who's going, how much we're paying, does it fit into what we've budgeted, et cetera. But I wanted to see if we could get as many people there for at least a day as possible, if interested.
It didn't give you any options if you didn't wanna go, right? You just, you had to pick one or two. I don't wanna go to either.
But it didn't let you?
No, no. You just don't pick them.
So I didn't pick them, so you're not gonna hear from me.
Okay.
Me neither.
Okay. Okay.
I didn't pick either.
So did everybody do it?
I think I saw, I got in there, but I don't think-
I need to do it.
I had to check in my wife.
Yeah, sorry, it should have let you or not.
Especially don't check with the wife. I love Springfield for Mr. Schmidt.
All right, so that's all the difference. So, Mr. Williams, there's no more public comment. Oh, Margaret, I'm sorry to skip over you.
So I just wanted to say that the Illinois Liquor Commission defines delivery as home delivery.
Yeah. So that's good.
To me, that's still there.
My point is, under the bridge, you're homeless. Don't tell me where I did not be in those driving angles.
Oh, my goodness.
All right.
But we could clear that up if we wanted to.
We could. Mr. Williams.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene in executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 ILCS 120-2 C11, an appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C1.
Second.
That was it. A public comment?
Do we need to do a public comment before we do this?
Thanks. I thought I asked for it.
Pull back.
But I didn't. Is there more public comment?
There's no public.
No. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second? We have to roll call this, correct?
We're gonna do it all.
Roll call, please. Alderman Wentz. Alderman Wentz.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Lawyer.